Let's call this meeting to an end. I want everyone to join me in the pledge, please. Let's lead the way, institute the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and for liberty and justice for all. I have a real call, Mrs. Dawson.
Here. Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Barton.
Here.
Trustee Garrett, your next few.
Here.
Assistant Henry Webb.
Here.
And W. Ford.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. We have two sets of, we have two meeting minutes we have to vote on to approve this evening. I'll start with March 8th. Our March 8th board meetings. Would there be any additions or corrections? And if not, could I get a motion to have them accepted?
So move.
Motion by trustee Connor. Second trustee Porter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And we have our minutes of our organizational meeting, October 5th. April 5th, excuse me. Uh, I know, I wrote all of this down. Uh, would there be any additions or any corrections to these minutes? And if not, could I have a motion to have them accepted?
So move.
Motion trustee, uh, Porter. Second trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I see we have, uh, some people from the community this evening. And it's my pleasure to introduce them but to have them at our meeting. The only thing that I ask, if anybody that wants to, uh, approach the board with anything, that they give their name before they do so, so that we can write it down for our minutes.
Celine Parker, county legislator. I'm asking to go first because I have two more town boards to attend tonight, so. Uh, I brought you a summary of our Clinton County properties that are going up for auction on June 23rd. It's tentative, but it's kind of pretty well set. And, uh, so you have an idea. It's being held at the, uh, Inn at Smithfield. So you have an idea of what's up for sale.
Thank you.
Do you want them for the office? Joe, would you like them?
Yes, please. Thank you.
If those like to know what's on sale?
Well, I was thinking, I seen your, I seen your handle, I hope.
Yeah, enough for my other four meetings. Uh, there's another, um, I just want to tell you, sales tax. We just got a report last week for the first three months. It looks good this year for both projections, not by much, but this above. So the economy is holding here in Clinton County, so we're doing well with that. Um, the other thing I thought you might be interested is, um, a summary of the solid waste and recyclable tonnage at our convenience stations for last year, how they all compare. We have several convenience stations. And I think we're guaranteed to have them another seventeen, eighteen years, but there's always talk about closing some of the smaller ones. Because they're unprofitable, and you can see why they're closing at some of them.
In McAllen, something else?
Casella, but that was part of our deal with them. Just so many years and so much of that.
So we're one of the larger ones?
Yeah, we've done pretty well. Usually we break about even price-wise. They didn't list that there, but that's usually. Uh, another thing I brought you is, um, you know, we have an installment plan to pay taxes to county. And that has worked very, very well. A lot of people take advantage of it, it's growing every year. We're, I think the only county near our state, but other counties are now interested. So I thought I'd show you, um, how many people in our town of Champlain have elected to pay since 2004. These are the day and where it taxes. You can see it's growing. What you want is more paper, right?
Well, I find that that's, uh, in some instances, that's, that's much, much better. It's easier to pay smaller amounts.
Yes. And it's been, it's been four years now. County, county. Yeah, the county initiated that. And that, uh, a little bit of a cost at first, but, uh, I have different notes here because I'm with the different boards, so, um. Uh, county highway program for this year, first we don't have anything in the village, but we're doing Lake Shore Road, which is in a part of this in the town of Champlain. We're doing the whole road for a million dollars. It's quite a length of road. It really needs doing.
Starting from Nunbe?
Yeah, all the way down into town, Plasker.
Wow, spread out some law.
Yeah, a million dollar project. They're putting in the culverts. They're almost done putting in the culverts. And they start doing the recycling work. And La Valley Road also in the town of Champlain. You know, there's a little area where they consider the fly area that floods every year. They're raising that about thirteen hundred feet of length of road. So, um, that's about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. The others are in my other town, Morris. So, um, the only other piece of paper I'm going to give you is, um, the following payments that were made to school districts for return taxes. I thought maybe you'd like to see that also. You know how, um, the county must make the school districts whole? People who don't pay their school taxes, that county pays the difference to the district. So the school districts never go without the money. Um, and then eventually if people don't pay, well, the county just sold it to the property.
Nothing free.
Nothing free, but we do keep, uh, the school districts and the towns and villages whole. They never go without their taxes, so. And the only other thing is I've been talking with Joe. We're hoping to do a lot of great things and maybe shake some money from the federal government, maybe do something with our river. So Joe and I have been talking and who to make connections with politically and moving forward. My path could take forever. I've been on it for a long time wanting a river dredge, especially at the other end with the marinas, but we're not getting anywhere fast, so we're going to keep at it.
Excellent.
But certainly need it here. And now I have selfish interest to have time to read back.
Actually, I only have one question for you. Uh, reading in the paper, Governor Pataki was up here stating that, uh, there should be monies coming to this area to help the municipalities with the health care and what have you. Were you at that?
I was not. I had a conflict yesterday, I had a funeral to attend, but, um, I think you probably was talking about Medicaid and paying my health expenses.
Right, right. Uh, Medicaid, a pension. Uh, I was wondering, you know, if, uh, if there might be any literature that might be coming our way.
I'd be very happy to share. I'm not getting anything.
Okay, then if you would, please.
But that's his thought, but I'm not sure the legislature is going ahead with it.
Right, you know, but that, I was just reading that in the paper. All, all the municipalities were all, well, even yourself is suffering with, uh, health care.
Oh, yeah. Really, it's the county. Every year our Medicaid goes up a million dollars.
Right.
It goes a million and a half over in 2003, over 2002.
From the previous meetings, yeah, you were talking about. And I was just wondering if there was any, going to be anything forthcoming on that, that's all.
I hope so.
Well, thank you.
You'll really help us. Because as you see in your tax bill, I think Medicaid is like sixty-seven percent of your tax bill. You know?
I know. We know.
Oh, that's a big chunk, so if you will excuse me, I have to go to Champlain and then Morris.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Celine, I have a question. Yep. It's in litigation. Yeah, it's in litigation. The Zachary property, finally, we settled in the courts on that one, and that one will be up for sale, but, uh, yeah, that one's still in litigation.
I gathered that.
One on the hill, yes. Well, again, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You have any questions? No, where do we check?
We'll track it out.
That's what I do, counties.
Oh, thank you.
We'll track you down.
Or I do drop them.
No, you say you're going to be short, so.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Good night, son.
Thank you.
Good night, man. Good evening.
At this time, did you bring anybody else that would like to address the board?
Uh, yeah, I would like to introduce myself. I'm Ray Albedere, and this is my brother Gabe. And, uh, we had just purchased, uh, my father's property a few months ago, or a couple of months ago, down in Champlain here, and, uh, by the river.
Right. By the bridge.
And, uh, there was a few questions we were interested in finding out, mainly the water tanks. I see we were paying water and sewage stacks down there, and.
The binors went through there and then all the pipes in that were all broken.
Oh, that's another, no, I'm talking about the water tanks there.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can eliminate that there? Because there's no billing there that's using any water or sewage.
I'm not sure, but I think I heard some talk about that. As long as there's a structure, a building there that had water sewer service to it, and I believe there's still a wall or part of that structure standing.
Yeah, I know, but it's completely.
I understand and I agree, but, and don't quote me on this, but I believe the law says, it's not just a decision we make, it's what the law of the village says. And I believe it says something to the effect, any part of the structure is still standing. Don't quote me on this, but, I mean, we can research it more unless someone else knows more about it.
Yeah, because I would like to see what, exactly what it states.
Sure.
Because, uh, like I said, there's really nothing there left.
I agree with you.
A couple of cement walls.
I agree with you.
Can be knocked down pretty quickly, but.
I think the letter of the law is something to do that effect, and, and one of the public works guys had mentioned, uh, one time, geez, there's just enough structure there to recognize it as there was a structure.
Correct.
So there's kind of a, maybe if it's just a matter of taking the rest down, and I don't know, but it's kind of a gray area, I think.
Well, I think, I think if I, if I remember right, I think what, initially this was all set up, and this was set up well before this board, okay? This was set up way previous to us. I believe as long as there was a water outlet at that property and sewer, it made the property more appealing to a buyer. Now, say if you wanted to clean it up and somebody wanted to put a business down there, it would make it more appealing to them because the water would already be there and the sewer would already be there.
And another thing, from what I understand, that is considered a, a part of it is a flood area. And if that's the case, I don't know if anybody would even be able to build there.
Well, just because it's a flood area, you can still build.
Oh, you can.
It's not real smart to build in a fashion in a flood, but you can build on stilts and, you know, there's all kinds of options when it comes to that.
And from what I've seen, uh, this spring, there was quite a disaster down there.
And it took the binors and the.
Well, we don't know what it was, uh, or. Was that the village, uh, did the village have anything to do with that, or?
We were, we were under a state of emergency.
We were under a state of emergency, and we got hold of the Luck Brothers, and the Luck Brothers come in and did that for us.
I think we're in a surge. Well, I think that pipe is, it's gone, or they broke it, or they went over it, or something like that. I haven't been able to find it.
I think probably what, I think that maybe what the board might want from you is probably a description or, or what you, what you plan to do with the property.
Well, we'd like to clean it up, to, you know, get all that metal out of there, and then, you know, knock down the buildings and actually clean it up.
I think we'd like to clean it up also.
Yeah.
I just noticed the other day how after, after the flood, you know, we had down there.
Hopefully this year we have all that taken out of there. That's where our plans are.
I know last year Pete was working on it, because I met with him down there. And he was with some discussion, he said, geez, my brothers are involved, and so I kind of knew there was something taking place, but, you guys live around here?
I live in Hampshire.
He lives in Hampshire, I live in Kansas.
I remember him saying something about one lives in, it's a big family, you know? But, uh, I had Pete as a school teacher.
Correct.
So I've known him for a long time, so, but, and I'm not sure if Pete even asked me at the time, I, don't quote me on any of this, but there's something to do with part of a structure, and that's the laws that exist.
I said all the back, that, all the back is all damaged in the way it took the binors away. You know, they destroyed all the back. All the walls all down.
Right.
It's just a front wall, there's two walls are up, that's it.
Right, so I think if, if you took here the three walls, and if it's an issue of just knocking it down, we may be able to do something. At this point, we don't want to.
I think at this, I think at this point, we can research that, but I, uh.
Exactly what the law says.
I'm very confident, if your intention is taking it down and you want to eliminate that building.
Oh, yeah, there's no question about it.
Knock it down for now and clean later, but at least we can say, you want by the law, place is level, we can eliminate that charge.
Yeah, I came over here the other day, I paid for this quarter here.
Right, right.
The property owners would have to write a letter to the office requesting services be terminated.
Right.
You yourself would have to make sure there's no usage being.
Property owners will have to write a letters asking, you know, that these services could be terminated on this piece of property.
Nothing.
Uh, no further use for utilities.
But we don't have no intention of building down there unless everybody comes up as a buyer, but otherwise.
Right.
But I know there's, there's a certain part in there that, because we've had some conflicts before, and I think, like I said, it was set up well before us, and I think it stated, uh, it makes the property, because you wouldn't have to dig a well, you wouldn't have to put in a septic system. If you were decided to sell it and somebody might want to put something there, it makes it more appealing because they don't have to go through all of that added expense, okay?
And another thing too, I mean, when this, uh, what was it, a bulldozer or a steel shovel?
Escavator.
It's a high, it was a high hole.
Because they had knocked down a lot of trees, and they did quite a lot of, it's quite a mess down there compared to what it was.
Well, there's a lot of ice there too, that probably did some of the damage.
It's possible, yeah.
The ice did some of the damage as well.
There was a lot of ice.
But, I mean, uh, yeah, and there's, you know, pretty, pretty good sized ruts there that they did in there. Is there any liability on that, or?
I'm not sure, again, but don't quote me, but under a state of emergency, it's to protect not only your property, but obviously the village. I'm not sure we're, I'm not sure.
I'm not asking for, I would probably like, just to get it, you know, a lot off, where they did make the, uh, and all those trees down there.
If you're going to be having something in there in the near future, probably to eliminate those three existing walls, maybe the time to use a spilling, I don't know, I'm not trying to tell you what to do either, I just.
Because if you're going to have somebody in there doing that, they're going to tear it up anyways, so.
Well, that's it, we don't, we don't want to spend any more money than we have to, you know? So we're going to try doing as much as we can ourselves, so.
Is it possible to, uh, to make a fire of all that lumber and trees?
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, old, uh, boards, and it's been, of course, the.
It's like brought it down.
The ice moved a lot of that stuff around, but it's all scattered all over the place. Is it possible to make a fire?
Not the village limits, it's against the law.
It is, huh? Even under certain, circumstances where it's controlled, or?
It's against the village policy to have an open fire in the village. Uh, we have to turn down.
I was thinking, even the fire department, uh.
Right.
Have a little practice or something.
Right, but we have no open burning in the village. It's done outside the village, but we've, I've had two people that I've had to turn down for that.
Wow, so that's.
I mean, it's our law, there is no open burning in the village. To make an exception for yourself.
Oh, yeah.
I'd have to make an exception for somebody up on Allen Street, and I'd have to make an exception for the lady that lives up here on the end, and so I can't do that, okay? And I, I'm sorry for that.
Oh, it's, it's just, uh, we'd like to know, you know, what the, what the laws are and, uh, what we're allowed to do and not to do.
Was there anything in our laws?
I'm just kind of skim reading it, it's a little bit vague, it's pretty much what we're looking at.
No burning, that's all it says.
Right, as far as no burning.
Village code.
Right, yeah. So there's no burning as far as that, that one, hands down. Well, I'm trying to look for you to see if I can find a clause where we can help you instead of getting a, equipment and to knock it down and then bring it back later to finish up whatever you're doing now.
Because we could bring it all in the bank and, you know, just have one, uh, one bonfire to, and even if, you know, the fire department would want to.
Well, they would probably do it for donation, but it's not feasible in the village.
In the villages, it's against, it's the law.
Even, I mean, even if you gotta apply for a permit or there's no exceptions.
There's no permit in the village for open burning.
Oh, well, there's no exceptions.
See, if you do outside the village, you get hold, you get it, if you do it in the town, you actually have to get hold of the forest ranger, the forest ranger has to come down and set, give you a permit for it, and you'll have to get a permit for it. You have to get it with the fire department to make sure that there's no insurance, no liability. I was fire chief for six years, so I used to do all of that, but there is no open burning in the village, and I'm very sorry again.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, that's fine.
So those three walls got to come down.
Well, so we don't, the only thing is for, to be equal to all taxpayers, if we grant you something, well, all right, it looks like it's demolished, and it does, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And then the next guy comes up and says, well, do the same for, then we start a chain reaction. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't have a question about it.
So, uh, you know, if there's a contact person, would Pete be the contact person? Can we get a?
Yeah, he can, I always get, I live just across the border in Nicole here, but.
Okay, can we get your phone number for you before you leave?
Yeah, sure, it's, uh, my area code is whoever that you want.
Yeah, Joe, Joe will be taken care of.
Okay, it's, uh, area code's four five oh, two four six, two one six eight. And for some reason, if you want to get.
No, you can get, get attention.
And Peter, if you get ahold of Peter, well, you'll.
We'll, uh, we'll investigate that as far as your water entrance or connection.
All right.
And we will be as.
How often do you have your meetings, uh, once a month, or?
Once a month.
Once a month.
Once a month. We will be having a meeting.
Choose the second Monday of the month.
Right.
Second Monday.
We'll be having a meeting the 10th of May. Our next meeting will be the 10th of May, okay?
Okay, very good.
So, but you should long here before that. Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much now.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for coming now.
Thank you.
So how's everything? Good? That's good. Not too stressful?
Good night.
Okay, we'll see you.
Good night.
Good evening.
Here in Port, I'm Steve Ashland, Gray Knight, Champlain, KC. And I'm here to discuss the interest of our sewer problem that we've been having ongoing for the last year or two, and it's going to be brought up, I guess, by the board today.
Sewer problem for Casey's?
Yeah, we, this is a very recent event, and I'm not sure if Paul was there and I was there. If he didn't bring it up, I was going to bring it up. Because I wasn't sure if he was going to show up.
Actually, this has happened just on Friday. I didn't know we had a problem with it.
It's been an ongoing problem for over a year or so, and it's, the reason I'm here today is to discuss if, if the problem is our problem or if it's a village's problem, considering the fact that we had, we've been spending a lot of money out of our pocket lately to get it unplugged, and then we hired people to scope it out with a camera and determine what the problem is, and there's definitely a problem. And we're looking for, and basically what we have, another, the neighbor to ours, Celine's building, that's in with the same sewer line as we are when it goes out.
Right.
So we're wondering if that's the extension of the main and if it would be a village problem.
The two properties share a common lateral out to the sewer main.
Lateral, right?
Yeah, well, it's a lateral because if it goes to the main, the main is ours.
Yes, but it's not individual, one user lateral, it's a common lateral for two properties, which would need to be defined as a sewer main extension or as a personal property issue for their lateral. It's one of the other.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a question. I know that, uh, Mrs. Paquette is working on that building, but I don't even think she has water in that building, does she?
I don't know if she has water, but she does have sewer, right?
Why would she have, well, why would she have sewer, she won't water that picture?
It doesn't matter.
She's left the water out, there's no heat in the building, and she wants it to freeze. But the sewer has, the sewer has always been connected from, from historic building.
Right.
And the Casey's. And, and I've done several calls along with some other contractors for unblocking them, so I'm, I'm pretty well versed in what's there. Um, and, and what you've got is, uh, I'm just going to draw a real quick picture that will help everybody kind of understand this. This one here comes out this way. Comes out, and the sewer main is approximately right here, and there's a manhole right there, and there's a cleanout right here. Right here, well, it's easier sometimes to see it on paper. This is Paquette building.
Right.
This is the Casey's.
Right.
This one comes out the side of the building, this one comes out here, and they both connect. There's a huge cement wall, probably two or three foot thick, and it penetrates down in. There's a cleanout here. I know this line from inside the building all the way to here and up to here is new. Celine's line, we ran water in it and is, is connected. Larry said there's a break here where they brought a gas meter, which is a little different issue.
Right.
His question is, is that our, we have a main here.
Right.
We have two users here, so this is like a main extension.
Right.
Um, one of the things that I mentioned to, uh, what was her name?
Steve.
Steve. One of the things that I mentioned to Steve the day that Paul and I were there, is that not knowing exactly what this is, obviously years ago, you had two users into one line.
Right.
Normally, DC, federal law, whatever it is, if there's two into one, it becomes a main. So that's a main extension. What I would like to do, or propose, depending on, on the rest of the board here, is I'd like to abandon this and turn this back over to Casey's and Celine. Obviously, right now, there's a problem here. If we need to correct this main extension, drop a second line in, four inch, and make the connections, as long as Steve from the Casey's and Celine would be interested in us signing off and then taking responsibility of it. And from here forward, this problem no longer belongs to the village. We would no longer be responsible for any issues from point A to point B.
What I, what I'm asking right now is, you, you said you've had it scoped and everything, you've had that thing down through it to find out? What has your report come back stating? Did they say there's a lift in it, a crack in it? Is there limbs growing in it? They must, if you had it scoped with a camera, you must, there must be something in there, because if you can go from this cleanout, you should be able to go right straight through?
Right, you can't.
And you can't.
It was full of water. It's actually what happened. Number one, it's, it's full of water. We camered it and located it and spray painted the top of the ground. At the time the work was being done, trustee Barker showed up. I made a call to superintendent Webb so everybody could get a grip on it in case there was any discussion on it, everybody kind of knew what's there. Right where this ledge is, there's a major sag in it, which obviously it looks like the concrete is bearing down on it. You move back, this is like parking lot.
Right.
You move back here probably another ten feet, goes back underwater, and there's You move back here probably another 10 feet, goes back underwater, there's a major sag again. And then over in here is, is kind of pinched or something going on just before the main.
Okay, so our main actually runs by the sidewalk.
Yep. Just a little bit in the road, whatever. There's a manhole right here. Larry Sorrell, in, in conversation with him states that he's done this before, he's, he's been here too. When he ran his snake and he can, if you look at this manhole cover, you can hear it. We're two, three feet away is what he estimates.
Right.
My recommendation is, is if we're going to do this, hook right into the manhole.
Right, not, not the main.
Run two four inch pipes, which would be cheaper than putting an eight or a six inch. And then abandon it so we can cure this.
In other words, so what you're, what you're stating is hook in here and here?
I would dig, yep, very similar. I would come across with one trench.
Yep.
Lay them side by side, turn this one this way and that one out.
Right.
Keep them right in this, eliminate excavation because there's a major concrete thing. If we dig down, I think we can push under.
So, in other words, then, then they would each have their own lateral.
And they take responsibility with a paper that we get on file stating that he accepts our work and whatever we did there, and he's responsible. There's, there's no coming back saying, well, 10 years that, well, you didn't use the right pipe or something, and so does Celine. And eliminate village issues from here back of those buildings. I think that's something that's been there maybe for 100 years. It's pretty old pipe.
Yeah.
The concrete's been there for a long time.
We've had a lot of major expenses lately. Within the last year, it's been getting worse and worse. We have to hire people out and we probably have around $1,000 tied up with the scoping and with hiring people to take the, to unplug it. And we're not asking for reimbursement in any of that. We accept the responsibility for that.
Are we, do we have an idea of the depth of that pipe?
It's pretty deep.
Oh, that's.
Down over the vein. Excuse me?
Seven.
Is that about seven feet?
About eight to eleven.
No, the, the main problem or the only issue I can see is the cement buttman. But I think.
I think that was a retaining wall that they used to put the driveway.
Apparently, the villagers broke through it at one time before when the K C's gave us right of way to run a storm drain through there.
We have a, I think it's a 24 inch storm that impeded to the river there.
Right. So, beside.
We've been through that area.
We've been through there. Not where the sewer is, but the other side. And this other side, rather than getting into the excavation of a major cement retaining wall, I think if we went down that short distance, this much, we could push something through, or two four inches through. And then connect that way and connect this way to accommodate tearing of concrete wall.
Could you write a, could you write an estimate on that cost?
Yes. It would, it would depend on who's willing to contribute what. I mean, if it's our D P W forces excavating and your, your clients providing the piping material and something like that, we can work out. Yes, I can prepare an estimate and I'll answer the question.
Would, would the, here's another question. Would the K C's be willing to pay for the cost of the pipe if the village was willing to install the pipe?
I can bring it up at my meeting, but I don't see a problem with it.
You're talking four inch, four inch S D R, you're probably looking at 50, maybe 100 bucks.
No, there wouldn't be no problem.
Okay.
There'd be no problem.
Because they're having a lot of issues every banquet, I guess, these things clogging up. The thing that I see into the future is if the, if the historic building opens.
Well, you have one more added system tying into that.
Well, the, the only thing that I have a concern with is, with the K C's is they do a tremendous, a tremendous amount of cooking.
Yep.
Okay. They must have grease traps in place.
Yes, we do.
Because I'm telling you, grease is, you know, and that's an ongoing problem a lot of where, a lot of places in the village. But I think we can come up with some amicable agreement that I think we can work on that because say like you in the future, with this other building coming in, I, I think we need to do something with that area. It's the first time that I've known, I've been told about it.
And we weren't aware of it either.
There shouldn't be never be two tied into one.
No.
Like two, two sites tied into one and then entomated.
So, if that was, if that was a predecessor thing, we might work on that and, and try to reevaluate that.
If the buildings are 20 years old, we say wait a minute, somebody pulled a past one. But due to the age of the buildings.
Yeah, they're both old.
And I think we're going to eliminate a lot of liabilities later on because once that other building gets up and running, who knows who the owners are. But say we have one disgruntled to the other, he blocks it, you mess the other guy up, now it's a village problem. Again, we, we can eliminate this any future.
I think with you coming this evening, I think we're going to, I think you'll probably be pleased with the decision of the board. I, I'm thinking there's things that we would like to address and take care of.
We still have to speak with Celine as well. I, I'm sure she'll be all ears like you are, like, sure, fine, you know.
But we need to get both parties involved in this as well. Because we shouldn't have two of them hooked into a lateral. That's, and that's what that is. That's, that's not what we do.
It's a main extension at this point.
That's not what we do.
Exactly. Do we know which property lies the, the pipe?
We're not really sure because you were looking at it and I think we had Larry down there, we had Woody down there, we had quite a few people there. But we want to expect the manhole as well, just so everybody can kind of digest this. It's kind of close either way, isn't it? I mean, that's.
Mrs. Pocat, I was just talking to her and we're, we're going to get together and you determine where the property line is anyway.
Right.
For her interest as well as ours.
For your interests as well as hers. But I remember when I was a child and I went to the print shop, the print shop used to be underneath the K C's town. And I believe just a walkway was on the building side. It was like four foot, so I, four foot from the K C's.
Yeah, basically where the stairs are, I believe.
Right, it's just about where it is. But as long as you and Mrs. Pocat get together, I'm sure that you can approach the board again.
As long as you're here, we can document that the K C's have authorized, or go ahead, depending on what we come up with, Celine, as far as you're concerned, you're, you're satisfied with this, you will sign off when we're done?
Yes.
Your responsibility and you'll.
Because we'll be like any other resident, that you're responsible from the building to the main.
Exactly, okay.
I'm going to have to stop this discussion because we have to go to, to a public hearing. Public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing on our proposed 2004, 2005 budget.
So.
Moved by trustee Connor.
Second.
Trustee for your.
Aye.
Aye. Would there be anybody here this evening that would like to review or have comments or discussion on our proposed 2004, 2005 budget? Apparently, there's no one here this evening. So, I, could I make a motion to go back into regular session? Can I get a motion to go back to regular session?
So.
Motion by trustee for your.
Second.
Second, uh, trustee Barker, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, could I get a motion to approve our 2004, 2005 budget? Moved by trustee Connor?
No, no, no option.
Second.
Because you were here for it.
I wasn't really a part of it, so I don't feel like.
Seconded by trustee for your. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I need a roll call vote for that?
He would hurt.
Trustee for your?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Barker?
Aye.
And mayor of the board votes aye. Thank you very much. Paul, you, you missed the fun part of being on the board.
There's always next year.
Yes, there is. And I, at this time, I want to take the time to thank the board members that were working on it with me. I think we did a good job this year. We tried our best. We are still doing well. I was reading, did anybody read in Keysville what they were looking for a $50,000 house? I figured out their tax rate was $694,000. $694,000 and the village is still $490,000. So, I don't promise anything for next year. We are doing our best. Okay, then, so we, can we continue with this now? I, I just had to close it and go into public hearing.
We're kind of on the same page and everything makes sense. And once we talk with Celine to make sure, and I, and I don't see there's going to be any problem there. Sounds like a kind of a plan.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, now is a good time probably to resolve this issue in case, you know, maybe they might want to pave that parking area or something, you know, when, when Celine does do, do finishing work on that property for the parking area for, you know, the museum. So, I mean, that way you feel safe about not having to tear, tear that up if some other work was done there for repairing that wall and the steps and all that, you know, which would maybe, might want to be done there too.
Okay, then, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, mayor of the board.
Thanks.
Uh, like I said, you get with Mrs. Pocat. We will work together if you need to contact any, Joe, Chuck, Paul, anybody. You know, they're on the Water and Sewer Committee, these two, so.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you now.
Good night.
Good night.
I'd just like to let the mayor and the board members know how I got involved with this was I happened to see a little crew of people on a corner and being, as they say in Hawaii, the word for it is niele. It means nosy. So, I pulled over to see what all the commotion was, and that's how I kind of got involved in it, but, so.
Well, that's good.
And I'm glad you did.
Well, I, I got involved because I was at the last K O C meeting.
That's right, too.
And the discussion came up, not necessarily much about the sewer, but the water, but that did come up. And then the day afterwards, I spoke with superintendent Webb and trustee for your, just and even Larry Sorrell to get some more information or try and get an idea of what's going on.
Okay, then, on to the mayor's report. I have had all kind of paperwork and discussion was brought up and I had paperwork come up and superintendent Webb was more than congenial to work on it. Donna was more than congenial to work on it about our supposedly sewer parker district. From what I can gather, I've got to go through the state controllers and nobody, apparently there's nothing on record. I know that this has been an ongoing problem and I think there was a time limit up to be a year to have it formed or annexation. So, I would like the Water and Sewer Committee, whatever it needs to do, to see what they're doing and if annexation is the, is the idea. Because as far as I can see, without them doing their district, it puts the village in violation. I will no longer put up with hearsay. Superintendent Webb can work on that as well. Any information, like I said, if the Water and Sewer Committee has to get after the town, if superintendent Webb, it's time.
You'll have a full report of the update of all water sewer districts for the town of Champlain. I'm waiting for one last call.
Okay.
And you'll have that tomorrow morning.
Okay. I, I, I think it's a game, and I don't mean to be rude to anybody, but I think it's a game that some of our fellow boards have been playing and we're not playing it anymore. If, if it doesn't come to the satisfaction that needs to be, they are a water sewer user. If it doesn't come within our guidelines, we have the opportunity to shut it off. And I want them to know that. The tire cutter me do it now. On April 1st, this is, I want to let everybody know, I had discussions and I, and I thought better of not bringing it up, but I think I need to let the board know and the general public that there is an ongoing talk with a house developing firm. It's Fleming Group. It's a management group that deals in building homes and what have you. We've had a meeting on April 1st, superintendent Webb and myself were present at that meeting along with supervisor Bruce Wallett, Gregory Fleming, Matt Blair, and Mark Berry at CDC. This is only in its infancy. I wasn't going to mention anything until I had anything tangible, but just to let the people know out there that there are talks about new housing coming into the village. And I'm saying again, and I reiterate, it's only in the talking stage. I would like to, I, I've gone around the village and I, I'm taking Chuck Connor's place. Trustee Connor, I got a phone call this evening from a lady asking when the village will be picking up bagged lawn leaves and small twigs. And we usually set up our times in April and May to pick up the lawn debris, which only means leaves and small twigs, does not mean any other debris that may be on the lawn. At this time, I would like to see if, if there was any suggestions for any dates because I know people are, are picking up their yards. It's a little early. I think people are trying to get it done. I know I'm doing mine. What do we usually do with that?
We, we usually have at least two days in May and whatever is convenient for, I guess, the public works crew. I think it's usually Tuesday, Thursday days and maybe like a Tuesday or Thursday in one week and then like two weeks after that, a Tuesday and Thursday prior to Memorial Day. So, we'd like this probably set, and I had that on my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no. Notes here. We probably should try and set it up so we can get it out.
Right.
Before our next meeting.
Right.
And you probably want, you know, if it's a Tuesday, maybe 11th and the 25th, or Thursday is the 13th and the 27th. So, when I say Tuesday, Thursday, I think because those were usually more convenient days than Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. And certainly you know what's your schedule is more than what we, we know.
Well, I'm, I'm preparing the work schedules now for the rest of April, May, and June. So, I'll just put two days in there. We'll figure.
So, your suggestion would probably be the 11th of May and the 25th of May. Because I think we used to do another Tuesday.
Yeah. And because it gives people opportunity on with the weekend.
Gives them over the weekend to get it ready and it ain't hanging out there all week.
Right.
You know, it's better to get it up. So, we, we would like to set up pickups the 11th of May and the 25th of May. Today is the 13th. Could we do one two weeks before, like the 27th of April? Because we are going to have some debris by the road, there's already starting to put bags out.
Well, if we see something, we'll pick it up.
Yeah, I think that's what it was like in the past anyway. I mean, if there's stuff, even if people have swept up, you know, around the street, I know there's piles, you know, you know, swept up sand and stuff. There's small piles of, I mean, usually just go, they, they, people, you know, the village crew sees that, you just go.
Right.
Pick it up at the time or somewhere along the way when they, when they have time to do it. Instead of having all this, you know, people sweep it up and put it in piles and then somebody comes along and.
So, are we going to set up three pickup dates or are we just going to set the 11th to 25th?
Well, I think April 27th is a good date.
I think April 27th. I think we need to.
Get the early pickup for those.
Because that's every two weeks, I think. So, we'll have three pickup dates and that will be published. Okay, then, thank you very much. And I'm sorry.
It's fine.
But what, what happened, I got a call tonight on it. Oh, and another point, I want, Mr. Webb, we have our property at, what, 93 Church Street?
Yes, sir.
From what I gather, it's, it's in a different place now. I would like you to check with the county on what their proposed thing is since now they have it to make that property safe.
Celine's list. It's on, on the list for auction for June 23rd.
Right.
I confirmed that with the Clinton County Treasurer's Office.
Okay, but what I'm saying is the building I know is up for auction, but we still have the safety issue.
Yes, sir.
Now that the county has it, that safety issue goes to the county.
Yes, and I've spoken to the county about that within the last week and they will let us go ahead and put up some safety barriers and they will, they will cover the cost of whatever we have to do.
Okay, then, that's what I needed to know because we need to secure at least the north side of that building. Okay, then, thank you. We have a, I'm kind of at awe about Nortrak and our, our back hole bucket tractor. I got this quote again and it just came, I think it came in a box today on looking at another $4,037.51. I don't think it was two months ago, we put $5,800, I believe it was into it.
That's correct.
So, now we're looking at 10 grand in two months. Well, my, my thing is, I would have thought that that would have been when they had it apart and they were looking at the shifting cover and they were looking at the slide axle for, for locking up. I would have almost thought when they had it apart that they seen some of this. You know, that's my opinion because once you have it apart, you have it apart. Okay?
I share your dissatisfaction with the repair if you change work.
And I agree. We had a discussion before the meeting about this, you know, we just received this today. And I think superintendent Webb is still investigating and is going to, you know, certainly come up with.
Right.
Something that he can discuss with Nortrak.
Also, my.
Also, my, well, I had a discussion with Joe as well when I first heard about the incident, and he said he was getting estimates and whatever. I took it upon myself, made a few phone calls, just to confirm replacement costs under state bid.
Oh, thank you. That was my next.
Well, in, in the process, I, I gave John Deere the opportunity. They indicated they did not have state bid. Once they were made aware that it was Village of Champlain, the numbers seemed to change radically. I'm not sure if the guy didn't take me seriously, or what, so I, he gave me a retail number of $95,000, um, and, and indicated that he wanted to competitively bid against state bid, even though he could not offer it. And I said, "Well, thank you for your help at this point," and moved on. Moving over to Beashard's Farm Equipment, where we made our last purchase of equipment, to find out if they had New Holland Industrial, just because due to the application, we use the thing year-round, every day of the week. I wanted to stay away from the agricultural and go to industrial. Indicated that they do not have the franchise for industrial, but he was going to investigate, being a New Holland dealer, may be able to have a company transfer and let it be sold out of this office, so it could be serviced under this office, uh, here in Champlain. Haven't heard back from him yet. Of course, it's kind of short notice, this thing all started here on Friday, so I just put a few calls in in case the subject came up. I have a few numbers to work with. But I agree with everybody so far. The numbers don't look right on this bill, nor the first-time service didn't look proper, and a machine that's 12 years old, from what I understand, and it seems like every time we deal with it, we, we seem to be paying plenty for it.
Right.
Maybe it's time to, to compare numbers with other competitors.
Right, uh, because I, when I read that, and I've done a lot of mechanical work, and I looked at that, and I said to myself, "No, no, no, I was not happy with it."
Unlike you. I don't claim to be a diesel expert, transmission, whatever, but a little common sense here.
So, you are in the process of going through this?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the thing of it is, I think at one time Superintendent, our past Superintendent Sullivan, had got quotes on the Cat, uh, John Deere, I think there was a bunch of them in there. What I would like is, uh, probably our superintendent to go out to different sites and different agencies, or if you yourself like to do that, see what we can do with a decent. I don't know if it was a 634. I don't remember all of the stuff on it.
The downfall, I, I thought about Cat as well, the problem with Cat, they just moved out of the area back, like Syracuse and something in Burlington, resource part availability. I know it's new, but someday, sooner or later, we need something.
Right.
And so, I'm trying to stay up, I'm gonna get in contact with the Village of Ross's Point. They have a, a New Holland Industrial. They just got here not long ago. And just confirm that they're satisfied, it's doing whatever, where they're getting their parts. Beashard indicates they can get parts, no problem. The sale of the equipment is a franchise issue, but his regional rep may be able to handle it.
Right. Okay, then. Thank you very much. So, they work on it. Like I said, when I read that today, I was, I needed a nerve build. Okay? And at this time, I would like to take the time to thank, uh, some of our village employees for the courses that they've taken. We have Larry Sorel here at 603 Fundamentals of Hydraulics. And Ron Houston, same thing, 603 Fundamentals of Hydraulics. And again, I would like to tank, uh, thank our Superintendent Joseph Webb on his receiving 22 hours in our, uh, Code Enforcement Association, because she's working his way to, for the full certification. And last, and this was in correspondence, um, I wanted to know that, uh, Mr. Woodrow Kissel has passed his, uh, wastewater treatment, and, uh, he is now a 2A wastewater treatment operator. I want to thank everybody in the village that participates in these ongoing studies, and thank them for their, for their time, for their education and upgrades. And one last thing for me, I would like to call an executive session, um, to talk on personnel issues. Do I need a motion for that?
Motion.
I don't know if I need that now, or can I, when I go into it? Okay, that's what I thought. And again, uh, thank all the board members for their budget process. And on to our trustees' report. Trustee Connor.
Uh, nothing at this time. I will have some, uh, questions, uh, in other reports once the video ends.
Well, thank you very much. Trustee Barker.
Yes. Well, this is gonna take a couple minutes, but seeing as my first public address, I figured that there's a few people I'd like to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank the voters that helped me in this process of getting elected to this position. Also, I'd like to thank Susan Moore, the Press Republican, for her kind article she printed on me in the paper. I, I thought it was a very nice article. I was kind of a little biased. Also, I'd like to, uh, thank Mary Laporte, the fellow trustees, village employees. They've all helped me in this transition to the new position, and they've answered all my questions. They've really helped me, uh, be prepared to take this position, and I wanted to thank everybody very much for that. Moving right along, as street commissioner, we're now working with Superintendent Joe Webb on short and long-term proposals for repairing our roads and sidewalks. We are in contact with the federal and state agencies to see if help is available for us, and we hope to have a report for the next board meeting outlining our proposals. I would like to thank Superintendent Webb for his dedication in this matter, and all matters that he pertaining to the village, uh, subjects. He does a fantastic job. As Deputy Commissioner of Tools, we've just talked about this recent problem we've had with the backhoe, so we've, we've kind of covered that one. Deputy Commissioner of Building and Property, I really don't have anything to report at this time. As Deputy Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, I plan on meeting with the Recreation Commissioner, uh, Mary Freeman and Angel Sanchez this month. I look forward to working with Commissioner Garrett on hoping, uh, to have a report with you guys by next meeting. Uh, last of all, I'm not a member of the Water and Sewer Commission, but I have had the opportunity to get a tour of our faculties. I want to thank the employees down there. They really helped me out, feeding me with information, how the system works, and I really want to thank them a lot for their, their help. I've also been in contact with the Village of Ross's Point Water and Sewer Commissioner, Thomas Reed, and Tom has arranged for me to take a tour of their faculties. I've also had a chance, uh, in the last eight days, take a tour of our hydro plant, and I look forward to gathering information on how and if it's worth pursuing that project. Uh, it's, it's a really interesting site up there, and I'd, I'd really like to pursue that to see if, is it feasible? Is it, is it something that we could do and, and really, uh, become an asset to the village?
Just, just so you know, while we're on that subject, um, approximately, give or take, a year ago, that issue came up when I came on board, and just so the board knows, it's not gone cold.
Oh.
It's so many other issues.
Right.
And, and I think, and you'll see as you go along, and not to discourage you, I encourage your, what, or efforts, or whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
But, uh... Well, I think it's just worth looking into.
Yep.
I mean, uh, it, it costs time, and right now, I happen to have some, so I, I'd like to look into it and see if it is worth pursuing or not. At least we know one way or another if it's, if it's worth pursuing.
Sure.
Other than that, that's, it kind of concludes my first eight days as, uh, village trustee, and, uh, I look forward to working with everybody, and, uh, I want to thank you everybody very much for helping me out through this. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the kind words, and we'll try not to tell you so much next time.
So, what you gotta do, you gotta get the camera on him when, when he talks.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Do something to move the camera.
I'm gonna find somebody to do that. Trustee Garrett's not here this evening. I have trustee for you.
I don't have too much this evening. Most of it's all been covered as we, as we went along. It was the, the wastewater leaving Casey's and, and the store building, the John Deere, which we spoke about, our, uh, industrial piece of equipment here in the back. Probably one thing, and, and I'm not sure exactly how that works, our, our correspondence and our bills to be paid, um, and this is a question I'm throwing out. If, from what I understand, our bills to be paid go right up until just about when we have our board meeting, the second weekend of the month.
It's Thursday prior to the board meeting, which is always the way that...
They gotta be at noon by Thursday.
Thursday prior to the thing, and that would put it to be paid. So technically, by doing it that way, it's every 30 days by the calendar, correct?
Right.
Because it's, it's the second week. If that timeframe could be done from the first to an end of the month, it would allow two weeks of preparing the report and, and getting everything done, and then the bills are always paid for that month. You're not a month of one in, in a week, week and a half into the next month. You see what I'm saying? Even though it's still every 30 days, well, I, I'm trying to go through the bills. I'm trying to learn it, and, and not trying to say there's any problems, other than it's easier to recognize a bill monthly than a week or two into the next month. And I don't know if, if, if that creates havoc with our vendors, or does this, uh, if it makes no problem, would it be recognized easier by the board? This is June, this is July. No, here's June and part of July, or, you see what I'm saying? And it gives us our report where we have it more than two days before the board meeting, or three days, um, and you're still in a 30-day cycle. You're still, your vendors are still 30 days apart. You just backed it up one week to fit it into a month instead of a month.
So, potentially it could be more than one, correct? If it came, if it came in, say, the second of, second of April.
It'd be at the end of April, or the, it'd be the second week in
In May.
In May.
And you're, you're over the 30-day, if there's a 30-day...
We're over it now. We're 30 days anyways. You're backing up the cutoff point. It's the same thing.
You're not, you're not as much. I, I...
You see what I'm saying?
But I, I...
If, if, if this board meeting, we approve to pay the bills, that's for the, um, for the month that we're in, or the month prior to.
Month prior.
A month prior. So, you're still every 30 days, but the board meeting every 30 days.
You could be, oh, see, the thing of it is, 40 some days.
It's, it's... What your suggestion is, that 30 days be from the first to the 30th, 30th, 31st.
Whatever days are on that month.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but 30, 31 days a bill doesn't make any difference when it's paid, as far as I'm concerned. You know what I'm saying? I, 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 I know that when I was fire chief, that if there was any vouchers or any bills that needed to be paid, I had, I had to have them in the Thursday before the board meeting, latest at noon. So, you're saying the second Monday, we have our board meeting, so that would actually give them at least seven days, probably 10 or 11 days to get that all together.
Right. Gives, gives you more room in the office as well, the chance to, "Oh, jeez, not today, tomorrow, because maybe water and sewer billin' yet," or... And it would categorize your bills, this, this thing of bills is the month of January, February, give or take a day, obviously. I mean, we're not looking to sharp pen pencils that much. It is to categorize it, and it gives these girls a week and, it's the second Monday, so a week and a few days to prepare it, which the sooner it's prepared, the sooner it's in our box. I know that, and, and it's, and I know I'm, I'm still kind of new at this, every month when I get here, I say, "Oh, my God, this month, I'm missing one through four on correspondence." You know, and, and that's okay. Chuck had a copy. I think you were missing one through four.
Right.
But I sort through these things, if they were marked, you know, the Cs are great, you know, and, and, and no discredit, girls. Trust me, I'm not. I'm just, I'm, I'm running around calling people, and this, you know, there's a backhoe thing, it's crowded. I know I've had all month to get it, and I did. I grabbed one bunch halfway through the month, read it all. I come back, there's another one, same amount. And that's okay. But so now, I'm trying to get this organized with the agenda, to match the agenda, and I search through this whole thing, which... And I know that, but I didn't, I didn't know that, because this, the agenda hasn't been printed until the 13th. Right?
Which is our normal, would be like Thursday.
Thursday before. Yeah, 'cause it was in our box Friday.
So, we try to...
It was in our box Friday last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I sure was in there Thursday. Yeah, so it gives you Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and actually, when it gives you four days to get ready.
Right. Well, see what I'm saying? If, well, of course, the agenda, that's a whole different issue, because whatever comes into it, and I don't know how that's, no, I don't know.
Anything that goes on the agenda is up to that period too, that we have received.
You may get the occasional thing, uh, item that might come in, in the mail that day, or, you know, that it may not be correspondence, but, and I'll put that in your box, too, or just kind of general information.
And she does where sometimes, you know?
Well, I know Chuck was saying, it used to be all numbered. I said, "Boy, that'd be great, they're all numbered." I know you used to have plenty to do, don't...
Through the month now, so it's tough.
We, we did have it a long time. We, we didn't copy it with anything until we did the agenda. And at that point, I would go through, and I would number all, copy it, and then she'd copy it. She'd give you a packet, so all the bills or all the letters with the agenda.
Well, no, keep doing what you're doing. I don't want to get that all at one time. I don't about the rest.
Oh, no, absolutely. I agree. All the way through the month, sure.
Please.
That's why it's not numbered. You know, there may be a few numbers on things, but they can't number it, 'cause they don't know what's gonna be on the agenda.
Right, 'cause they don't know what's gonna be on it.
Sometimes you have a problem, if Donna has copied something, then I will call it correspondence. Sometimes you don't see and see on it.
Right.
Know what you want. It's, it's a call on my part.
That doesn't happen very often.
No, no.
Normally...
No, and I'm not saying that. I'm not, don't, I'm not here to...
No, no, I'm just saying how it works. Normally, everything goes to Janice. She goes through it, and then she gives it back to me, what needs to be copied.
What is correspondence, what isn't?
Right.
And anything goes on that...
I do that on a daily basis, and I just pick up everything that's correspondence and number them.
That's why it's...
And if you have any that are not numbered, or you don't have, just call. I mean, she'll just pull my packet and have it for you.
Right, which...
I've called with yours before.
Yeah.
Right.
I used to call all the time, everybody's...
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
And many times...
I'm gonna make more work for you. I don't know how the procedure is. Not knowing that, I don't know how to, to come up with a solution. That's what I was looking for, an answer.
No, of course, partly it's...
Is there some way this could land easier than sorting through in the last four? And Paul was talking about it earlier.
Well, I, I have to admit, I spent about two hours.
But, but I knew...
You knew it. I, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm real, I'm green, as they say.
Well, as the time goes on, you'll get a lot better.
There's a lot of practice.
Where do you get your mail? We pick it up on a regular...
I pick it up.
Anything with a C on it, just put it in a separate file, pile, 'cause you know that's gonna be on the agenda.
Somewhere.
Okay.
Somewhere that's gonna be on the agenda.
And if it, it's, it should have a check mark, which means I received it back and copied it. When that's checked, I know that that's been copied.
Okay, that's the check.
And if there's no check, then...
If you put that in a separate file, when the agenda comes out, somewhere in there, you'll find that.
Right.
Somewhere in that file, you'll find that.
What happened to me today was I, I, I got my whole stack of papers for the month altogether, although I've been picking them up here periodically and reading them, and, but this morning, I was like, "Okay, I've gotta get all this straight with my agenda." And I mean, I went through a stack that big. "Oh, what is this one?"
That's good coffee time.
Trying to get it straightened out.
It's good coffee time.
It takes me years, three or four times to go through the, the stack to find everything that's on the agenda, because, I mean, you look at it and not, not...
You, you click.
Which is a better way? Both you and Chuck have had it both ways, you know, when we did it all together, all the copying, or we've done it like this? Is there, is there an easier way?
There an easier way, though?
I don't have a problem with this, Lee.
I don't think there's an easier way.
I don't think there's an easier way.
Because you're not gonna get it, you, you don't want to get everything last minute.
I think you as a, I think you as a trustee have to be responsible for your paperwork. You know, I, I, that's a part of your job.
Well, that's not the question of it. The question is, is if she did it one way or the other, that, I don't know what the other way is. I only heard Chuck talk about it, where, gee, she used to be numbered, but I wasn't aware that you get it one bunch at one time. Well, that's a deficit, too.
Well, that's the only way they go.
That's, that's...
That's a deficit.
That's too much.
Actually, see, that was, that was when we used to have two meetings a month.
Right.
Right.
So, that went just two weeks instead of four weeks.
Piled down, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it brought the whole pile down.
So now there's one more.
I think that worked well on a two-week, or a two-week meeting. I don't think that would work on a month. That would be too much all at one time to shove through the tunnel. I think we need to just pick it up as we go, be responsible for ourselves, and if she puts a C on it, if you read it, because there's a lot of correspondence per se.
The C is fine, what I'm saying is there is no Cs. When I got here, and same thing with Paul, we're looking at Chuck's, let me see, maybe I do have it and didn't recognize it, you know, because they direct to see it. That's okay, I mean, but you know what I mean? It's not a problem.
Yeah, we have mine.
Here's one.
I have some that have them, some that don't.
You know, and that's okay, I'm not finding Paul, I'm just saying, when there's not even a C on it, you search for it, because you think it was just for your information. Then you do, but then you get some that aren't even there at all. You know, I got the first four, not even there, not even there.
One and five don't have Cs.
No, one?
Five didn't, one didn't?
Oh, one had a check, but no C.
Eleven didn't have a C.
Well, I'm not nitpicking here, let's not turn this into nitpicking on the girls. My question, not knowing that the thing, I'm just asking.
I think we have to discuss the system and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Right.
And why, no, sometimes there's a cover letter that didn't have a C, there was a C on the next page.
I had one of those too.
So I think it was attached afterwards, yeah.
Right. I had the check mark on the first one, the C on the second page.
Like I said.
Is there an easier way to simplify this, where I'm not buried in paperwork and any of us, reading?
I think the best thing to do is to use correspondence, anything that's got a C on it, put it aside.
Oh, you do?
And we're gonna just be sure that you don't get too many Cs.
Then that's fine. Maybe I just put it in a pile, I go through it.
If you're in Denver and Chuck here, and he's bringing in Donna, copy it.
Sure.
He gives it every, or gives it to her, then with a C on it before he copies it.
Right.
That'll say.
That's good. I'm just, I just didn't know if there was an easier way.
Has this happened before, at other meetings that I didn't know about, or we didn't know about?
I've had it on a occasion, but I...
Or is it just this one that's been the main problem?
Sometimes you have Cs on them, or, yeah, I've seen some.
Well, yeah, but that... See, I usually read my correspondence, so...
You don't tell me your memories, that whole stack, because I know I can't.
Well, no, but usually...
I have an idea, oh, there was something to do with sludge at the water tower.
Well, that's why I sit there with a cop.
Say, for example, I remember what I read, but I'm not gonna remember that whole pile, no way.
But I sit there and I read it, and I look through it. I just take that time to do it.
They are, they really are.
They just throw it on my desk, and I'll mark it, and then we get to go to copy it again.
Sometimes, you know, you don't know, you may not know that's gonna be on the agenda, how they determine what's gonna be on the agenda.
Right, exactly.
You might not know at the time, and when it comes in, you put it in our box.
Oh, I do, that's what I'm saying. As soon as I get it, I look at it and say, oh, that's my agenda item, I put a C on it. She copies it. So I'm saying, everything should have a C on it that's gone through.
The only possible thing is that it didn't make it to a mailbox, maybe got dropped, or whatever, that could happen.
It could have been, I copied it before Janice saw it, and then she put it on as correspondence.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then we'll make sure that Janice, when she opens the mail, reviews it, if she figures it's gonna be, make sure initially she puts a C.
Right, everything normally goes to her.
C one.
And then she gives it back to me.
Next one, C two. Next one, C three. And then when you copy it, it'll be C one, C two, C three.
Now, there's an idea.
And then when you put it on the agenda, you'll go C one, C two, C three.
There's an idea.
I just have to keep a list of what you have.
Just don't copy anything without putting it on the desk, that's all.
Right, I don't normally.
That's a good idea.
That'd be the easy way.
There you go.
You open it, you determine it, C one, C two, copy one, and that'll be that. Now, you can use that for your agendas, have your agenda, so...
It'll be done.
That's right, it'll be done.
There was two ones that C's on that were in our packet.
I had that too, and I couldn't find it on the agenda.
So I just... Uh, one from Randy Daniels, from Secretary of State, Quality Communities Vice Chair. Exploring ways to enhance equality of life through open space. And this one here is from same...
It looks like the same letter, two different signatures, two different paragraphs.
Two different dates that it came in.
And I looked for that too. So what I'm saying is you add that up, where's the first four? And I'm like, my God, there's gotta be an easier way, and maybe Albert's got the key.
Let's try that way.
That sounds like a good idea.
Let's try that way.
The only problem that we might run into a lot of times, if a letter goes out, that would be C one. And when we go to response, then I have to be sure to track, because you want those together.
You want to make sure that you track that back, it'd be C one again.
It could be C, C one A, C one B.
Because you have correspondence and reply.
Right.
Yeah, it's a little more work for you, but...
I guess I'm saying, I mean, that's what we're doing.
So it's a different response in the list, right? We can always pull it up.
I think we need to try, I think that'll work.
Good idea.
Okay.
Great. I'm not sure, I'm trying to forget where I left off. Oh, oh, on the bills, yeah. What's your opinion? I mean, you do them, right?
What would be the easiest for you?
Would that give you more lead time?
Yeah, it would be great, in my respect, but the only problem is you hate to have a bill come in and sit on it a whole week, and then know that you're not gonna get paid for another four.
But we're doing this anyways.
No, I mean, it's a single's on there.
Very few bills that we would get, like a service charge.
If it's every thirty days we have a board meeting, every thirty days they get paid, so what would be the difference? They wait the two weeks at the beginning of the month, or wait the two weeks at the end of the month, it's still four weeks.
Because you have, you have the whole month, and then you have, say, you could have thirteen days, so you're going, you could be going forty-four days, whereas if it's, if it's something you put on the Thursday before our meeting.
They wouldn't have to wait, they wouldn't have to wait till I think it's wrong.
Somebody turns in a bill today on a Tuesday, which is, because we normally have one on a Monday, okay? It's the thirteenth of this month. When do they get paid next month? Into the second week of next month.
Right, but still, but it's still only thirty days.
See my point? Now, if we backed up to the first of the month, everything backs up to the first of the month. The only difference is...
But you could have forty-four days then, before it gets paid.
Right, you're holding it for the two months, for a week.
Because I look at my calendar, it falls on the next month. You did thirty days, and then the second Monday of the month leaves two weeks. And anything coming from the first of that month is held because it's not on that to the next time around, so...
So you could go six weeks.
Plus the fact, if we have bills that come in Friday or Monday.
We add them to the abstract.
I'll read them out, and we'll have them. So we really keep things, you know...
I think, I think our bill paying is working fine. My opinion, I think it's working fine.
Yeah, it is a crunch on a Thursday. It's a crunch, right.
But Joe tries to do them as they come in.
Right.
And then if I have a bunch, then I can start, and she can start keep punching each...
That's why we add up the warrants.
It's actually, it works out pretty smoothly.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think it's working well.
So I'm, you know...
Well, it is a crunch, it is a crunch, it's a crunch.
It's not a crunch.
It's really not a crunch.
That's what we do on that Thursday before the board meeting.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing else done, do the agenda, do the abstract.
And normally, it goes fairly smooth, you know, if there's a problem, I'm usually, I'll backtrack, find out, if like, you know, miss punch something or whatever, but usually it goes pretty, pretty well. I don't know about Mr. Webb, if he, how it is on his end, but if there's fresh time, but...
My only question is, if we get all the invoices done by the end of the month, can we include those on the revenue report? That's issued at the end of the month, the fund, the general fund report? When you issue the...
We have no expenditure report?
Yeah, the expenditure report. Can we include, would we have a chance then to have an expenditure report that reflects this month's bills coming up before the board meeting? You know what I'm saying? We do an abstract now, but it's not reflected in the expenditure report we put in at the end of the month.
Because this is for the end of the month, this is March.
Right, but I'm saying, if we have all invoices before, by the end of the month, then we can do an expenditure report that reflects the abstract met at the board meeting, and then we have an actual budget.
All we gotta do is copy it with this. This gives you the balances as of this abstract. It's not a whole report.
Okay, is that something that's issued, or I guess...
Yeah, you get that every month.
Are you copying with that?
Oh, yes.
Those are your balances right there as of...
I would see that at the end of April.
You would see that, no, you get it with your abstract.
Yes, right, it comes with your abstract, it's stable.
It shows the expenditures, right, for the met abstract.
Yeah, it shows the balances as of today.
But it doesn't show the itemized budget items. It doesn't show what I've taken out of a certain budget cost code, so it just gives me a general.
Here's the cost, here's the item.
As a total, it will.
And then here, we have this report too, that shows everything that comes out by account number, by amount.
Right, but I mean...
And that shows it after its total.
And I'm looking at three different sheets to figure out which is what, because, okay, and now I get it out of A one nine two, oh, I gotta go to this, okay, I had a hundred dollars, and now I got ninety-five dollars, because I have to go back to this sheet, reference that sheet. And I'm just looking for one sheet that shows, okay, the abstract is done, now can we put it on the general, the detail of revenues, to show what it is by this board meeting? That's all, it's just...
Account revenues or...
Well, whatever, if you call it detail of revenues, it's all on the cost coding.
There's revenues and...
These are expenditures, this shows what all your account balances are.
After this abstract is done.
For each one, I understand, this is a generic sheet that shows me what's been drawn on for that month.
No, but we only pay bills once a month.
Right.
That's right. So that's why you only go to get it once a month.
All your checks, I write it as payroll.
I can see what he's saying.
Are you looking for something more detailed?
You gotta look at two or three different sheets to get the answer of where it went, not the total.
I have an abstract that's issued, that's fine, I'm not, it's not a problem for you, but I have an abstract that shows what the billing is, that the checks that we're gonna write for this month. But that's not reflected on the detail of revenues that's issued at the end of the month. I'm just saying that dates don't coincide, that's issued, I guess, the Thursday before the meeting. So that's after the fact of the detail of revenues that's been issued at the end of the month, the previous month.
Right. Well, I can't run end of the month report until the skin of the month.
Right.
And the only checks I write during the month are these.
Which are after the fact of the detail of revenues.
Right, but you've got the balances here.
I understand.
We update those. All you gotta do is look at this and look at that.
Well, so actually, when I get the detail of revenues, it's on date, because I don't have a copy of the abstract reflecting the new budget, the new, the new, whatever, line item cost.
It's not today until the next board meeting.
That's what I'm saying, then it's the next board meeting.
It's like thirty days later.
And this report here...
I'm just saying, if we cycled everything on the same end of the month date.
This report here, you get right at the end of the month. I only have to present it at the board meeting, because our control says I have to. But you have that at the end of the month.
But what you're saying is that if we ended our end of the month bills, these two reports would coincide?
Oh, yeah, if you did your abstract by the end of the month, or the first of the month. Okay, you did your detail of revenues at the end of the month, and the day before your detail of revenues, you had the abstract prepared, and reflect that in the detail of revenues, now you're dealing with where we are two days at the same time for that month.
What does the detail of revenues have to do with the abstract? I guess that's where I'm confused.
Well, don't, when you update this, doesn't it reflect every month, reflect what we build against?
Revenues or money?
Detail of expenditures, I'm sorry for my...
Expenditure.
Okay.
Detail of expenditure.
All right, all right.
That's all, I was just trying to kind of, because one's lagging behind the other by, I don't know, fifteen to thirty days, and that's why I'm just saying that, because, because it's not a big deal.
I can work with it.
I started with math.
I don't, you know, I don't wanna rewrite that.
I think we're trying to reinvent the wheel.
No, no, we're not, but I think what he's saying is, is that if we did our bills month to month, the reports would come out, and you wouldn't be thirty days or seventeen days late on the other report.
Because the abstract is done Thursday before the meeting, but the detail of expenditures is done two weeks before that, and doesn't reflect the present abstract that we've done invoicing for, or whatever, the invoices or bills that have come in. So we're always lagging fifteen to twenty days.
Well, instead of drawing this abstract summary, if I ran a, ran a abstract of all the accounts, would that make any difference to you? Because all it's doing is updating the balances that are on this here report.
I think the legal issue is that, I mean, you can't run the abstract until it's been approved by the board, right?
You can pay the bills and things like that.
That's right.
You can run it, but you can't run it.
We can run it, but depending, depending on approval by the board.
Because I'll be looking to pay the warrants tonight.
Yes, sir.
That means we're gonna pay the bills.
If it works the way it is for right now, I guess, until we can detail it. I think, I think I know what you're saying, because one report seventeen days or whatever day.
Behind the other, right.
One's detailed, one isn't, how do you, how do you know?
Well, I think the answer is, if you've got a balance on this account, and you know there's no more money coming out of there till the next board meeting.
Right.
It tells you where you're at.
There's not gonna be any more money coming out of it till the next board meeting.
I don't write any checks.
There's not, that fifteen day lag, there's nothing being written till the next board meeting. So you wouldn't, since you just take that figure, and I mean, what Janice gave you was for the end of March, this is for this warrant, which updates that particular code on the expenditure report.
And that figure is gonna be on that month-end report, because I don't have any other checks. So you know what that balance is before I even run that report.
With the days of next month, right? Not same month?
Yeah, so before I give him the end of April, it'll show all of these on it.
Right, the end of April. The next report will have these on it, right, Janice?
Yeah, at the end of, the next board meeting, I'm gonna give you a report the end of April. All of these are gonna be on there, just like this, because that's the...
But if you need to actually go and find out what is really left on there, you could compare, you've got probably twelve accounts, compare it to the expenditure, and that way you can even know where you are.
Backpedaling thirty days to the detail of the abstract, and then looking at what's issued the next month, at the end of the month. That's all, I, it's, that's fine with me, I'm working it now, I was... I was just trying to coincide all, coincide, make all the dates work together, that's all.
Yeah, I think, I think this discussion should be, we should be able to work on this discussion without being on a board meeting. You know, I think it's something that maybe we could put our heads together and come up with something.
Come in the office tomorrow, and we'll talk about it.
And we'll see. And we'll see if we can make up some kind of thing that might be compatible to everybody. I mean, you know, it's really, it's working the way it is, but if we can upgrade it and make it a little more...
It works fine, I'm not complaining.
You know, if it makes it a little easier for everybody concerned, I think we're open to that discussion. Thank you very much.
For what I said she was, but it wouldn't have been that important. That's it for my report.
Thank you, W. Four. Report of clerk treasurer.
I have my monthly report of detail of expenditures for the month of March.
Can we talk about that?
Dated March thirty-first, we got it before, if anyone has any questions, any assistance, what do you have?
I just got, just some observations, just letting you know, we're, this is at the end of March, we have April and May left in this budget year. Generally, we look pretty good. Generally, we look pretty good. I mean, we do have some accounts that are overdrawn, but in all in all, we look pretty good. Water and sewer type. I think we have to take a look and make sure we don't over expend in the next two months, if at all possible, just to be within, and I'm not saying you can't do anything, but just try and think about it before we spend money.
You're right. Especially the store. The only, the only thing to add to that is the water and sewer billing when we did April first, which I am going to bring up this evening, will reflect on the April report because that's the April report. So that will show a little more of us.
We still have sales tax coming in yet?
Got a check today.
Just got a check today.
That'll be in January. That's about twenty-five. Water and sewer billing for the month of April, which is April first, two thousand four, for the month of January, February, and March. Water is thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. And sewer is sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And that's on hand.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Stone. Onto our superintendent's report.
Gentlemen, I think you all have a copy of the report dated April third.
Oh, yes. I was impressed with this.
I will let you know that the agreement with the town of Plasberg regarding any asbestos breaks is still under negotiation in their office. If we do have an emergency, I believe we have a verbal agreement. They can respond if we have to.
Right. Should I believe they're going to bring it before their board?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Now that it's with their insurance and legal, they're driving around.
Right.
The DEC and I have been talking way too much the last couple of weeks regarding water sewer districts and flood programs for two thousand and four. That's coming together. We discussed Mr. Cannavon and his property.
All right.
Border expansion, the discussions continue. The gentleman's off until tomorrow, so I have not heard any new meeting dates or discussions yet. Updated tax maps are hurting me right now, but we'll get that. The contracts, the water and sewer contracts that we have with the town of Champlain are up again for negotiation and are due by, or expire May thirty first, two thousand and four. Who leads that discussion and when will that start?
Do we have a copy of that?
I don't think, have they dropped a copy of the new? I mean, they usually initiate that.
No, I have no new copy that I'm aware of.
I mean, that...
I'm just looking at the old one that expires May thirty first.
Well, I think the water...
Who generates the new one?
They do.
We, it's our contract or their contract?
They, they, they supplied it to us before. We reviewed it and made modifications to it.
The town supplied us with a lot later. That's why I think we should be in charge of reviewing our contract.
Well, all we have to do is copy it for everyone and look at it.
Right.
It'll be the way it is.
Right. That's what we need to do. I'll put a copy here.
All we have to do is update the rates.
Yeah, because that's got to be done anyways.
I know last year we had some negotiations on, like, because they wanted to have a six-month, this compared to a year contract, and there were, you were there, a few other issues.
They wanted a six-month contract?
Yeah. Don't you mind with that? Yeah.
I was like him, probably eight days on the job, so, you know.
Actually, it actually was late last year.
Right.
Well, there's keep going back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, I don't think we ever got the original one till...
Put that, that contract we can do buys, all right?
You're right.
That's the original.
Oh, print it out and put the new rate chart?
Have the board review it.
Have the board do it? Right. That's it. Okay. Sounds like fine domain.
Should discussion on this start shortly? Is this usually a long process for us? I think Janice says she's going to get make us a copy, so we'll have it in our mailbox so we can...
So something we'll start working on before it does come to a closure, or runs out?
It's two pages or a hundred? Two, which we have.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of paper.
It outlines major expenses, who incurs major expenses, who does minor, and...
And identifies the water sewer districts that we're serving?
Yeah.
It does identify?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does it correspond with the information?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
So we've got some homework to do on that.
There you go.
We're going to get it legal.
There you go. Already, already did that.
I think I agree with Mayor Port. This was a very good report.
Well, thank you.
Very good.
Everything's...
Taking a little while, but you know, every day in here, there's more to...
I mean, there's just not one, one sentence per thing. It's, it's, there's enough information here where you don't have to ask a lot of questions.
There's a little definition to everything.
Well, feel free, though.
No.
Ask your own questions.
This is fine. This is fine. I was impressed with that.
That's about it. We'll be investigating some other issues, the Barso Lake, the High Street, the issues that I think I listed in my previous reports.
We already, we already got this in your report, so we know where you're going.
I like that.
So I believe we're done with superintendent?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Correspondents, thank you very much.
Item one, correspondence to the town Champlain regarding a contingency response plan to the...
Town Plasberg.
Town Plasberg?
Who's that, sir? Town Plasberg, sorry.
Okay. I made a mistake.
I thought I read it.
You're talking about over, and I'm talking about...
We're still talking about budget, eh?
Start again.
Everybody don't know where one is?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
To correspondence from the President of New York on the Clinton County Pre-disaster Hazard Minigation Program. Any response also from the superintendent?
Does anybody really understand the scoring key and the scores?
I don't know how they establish the scoring key, but you know, it coincides with pretty much what the biggest problems are.
Well, even tornadoes is a pretty, a pretty big problem. I didn't know we had tornadoes around here.
I found out later that they're more of a grant, research, kind of a organization that finds governmental grants to help mitigate some recent issues.
Right. They're going to help us with the river, right?
They're going to help us with everything.
Mm-hmm.
Don't worry about it.
Item three, correspondence to the state of New York regarding the, um, end group system.
Will this benefit us, do you think? Will we be able to input our, all our stuff into that?
I'm trying to get signed on with that right now. I just got the internet back on my computer, so I have a kind of, I have a call that you can see what we can do to overlap our maps with their maps and get a cohesive plan.
Because apparently they're having a problem with territory, and this is really not going to be affecting around me or something.
They're running late to one, getting that thing updated.
Item four is notice from Parents Plus for prevention regarding the upcoming meeting of workshops.
Can you find out where that is? Because his location, can you let me know?
To the internet? Hmm. Yes.
I'm not, I'd like to go if I can, but I'm not sure if I'll even make it that day.
The workshops on Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth. Those are some of the workshops right back.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I see. I was just looking at the, didn't know the last page. But they have a meeting on April twenty-seventh, that's... The Wednesday, March twenty-fourth is coming along.
Another one, what do you put on? Yeah, this one here in Ableton instead. None of you going to attend, but that's all right. Okay.
Yeah, it's only seven on a Tuesday.
Item five, is invitations from New York State DEC to Bradley Wood, Woodville, Hicle, as an ECA, with water treatment plant operators. Item six is a supplemental lease agreement on the electronic sensor repeater from TSA.
Need some discussion on that? Apparently this is something that comes every, this is a five-year lease.
Yes.
This is hooked to our water tower?
Yeah, it's on top of our water tower. I already called them. They asked me if I could get some money every year, but apparently all the municipalities offer it as free of charge and...
Well, that's okay. I'm just wondering, is the five-year something we want to commit to at this point? Can we revise that to maybe a one-year standing until, I know we've got Port of Excellence coming in and on and on.
Oh, you can revise it any way you like. If that's up to you and the board.
A question, not knowing what the contract is, other than this one piece of paper.
No, I asked her why. I said, well, first, they're late. You're renewing them.
Right.
And then I asked her, I said, well, why is it five-year program now instead of the one year we've been doing?
It's been one year and they changed it to five?
Yes. Well, I guess we're just trying to...
Well, probably just so you won't have to keep doing it.
Exactly.
I can understand that. It's less paperwork.
Well, see, why they did that is because it was the tallest part, and that's why they put it there.
I don't have a problem being there.
No, I don't either. But five years, I hate to get locked in at this point due to water tower concern. We may be, not that we couldn't honor that, but one year, five years is free anyways. What difference would it make to them, other than us next year saying, yeah, let's do another year or five years or whatever?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Me neither.
It's, you know, if, if there's an issue about a different water tower or...
Expanding the height of this water tower?
I don't think...
We've crossed that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'd be open to, you know...
If I had to, I'd go stick it on the telephone pole next to the water tower.
Well, I'm saying...
Well, I'm just saying, we're talking with Port of Excellence. We're going to be in negotiations with them, and if something does come up, what does this contract say? Cannot be moved. I just don't want any legal liability, and maybe there's none. Maybe, maybe it's a, but why five years? Why all of a sudden five years? Maybe it's due to the fact they don't want to be bothered once a year. I don't know. Do we need to go five years is the question.
So you're, you're saying, and there's, there's more to this agreement than just this one piece of paper?
It's got to be.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
And I guess it would hurt to ask for, if there's more, but this is the way it looks to me. There's just this one piece of paper, an agreement, and then we sign it? Do they sign it?
It's done.
All of the terms and conditions of the lease shall remain in enforcement effect. What other ones are in there? I mean, if we're signing this, it's going to be this unless this refers to another contract. I don't know.
I'll verify it. I'll verify.
Did you verify? I think the only thing is what the deal is.
Hey, is there some other attachment here we're not aware of?
Yeah. What's the deal with five years? Are they looking just to not be bothered for five years or?
I guess. I'm not sure. That's all part of this homeland security of the organization thing, so...
Right.
Good.
So we're not signing this? We don't have it set? If they have to authorize, the mayor to sign it, if not?
Well, it'll give me a couple of days. I'll call and update the mayor on it.
I don't know. We should be signing a contract that reflects to a contract, a paper that's the same way you agree to a contract. We don't have the contract.
How about authorize the mayor to sign it, and Mr. Webb's...
Shall I just make a motion if Mr. Webb gets the material we need, just give me the authorization to sign it?
Well, this is October, right?
So it's already five months late, six months?
So just let it go to the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good day, boys.
Item seven, is invitations from the Clinton County Office of the Agent to attend a ten-fancy celebration. The mayor and the tenant will have to reserve him a seat up front.
Not nothing else to do.
Oh, yeah.
Interesting.
Uh-huh. I can appoint the deputy mayor to go.
I gotta work through that. I gotta work through that.
See how that all changes it? Doesn't that work, boy, eh? We'll see.
Something else? Eight, is correspondence from the Development Corporation of Connor and Conrad regarding the ten of the main unit. Nine is correspondence from the state of New York for technology regarding the statewide wireless network.
I think it's bad enough reading what was here.
And is correspondence from the Clinton County Highway Department regarding alcohol and drug testing, also asphalt materials and delivery work attached to this one.
Have these costs gone up more than what they were before?
I just got a copy of a new, I don't know what the old one was, so I, I have to talk to Mr. Langmore about that.
Item eleven is correspondence to in from Attorney CJ Madonna regarding one oh eight Main Street of the Grand Ole Property. And correspondence from Clifford Dumas regarding a reduction, requesting a reduction on the sewer portion of the sequel two thousand three one, the building from block four.
Yeah, I think we had discussion on this in the office to find out information. This, this particular property hasn't had that credit applied to it before, and from the understanding I have in discussion with some of the public works people that that a broken pipe froze and it was water that went onto the ground. It wasn't something that went through the sewer. And our policy is that we would
Charge the water house.
Reduce, reduce the sewage amount that's above and beyond what it would normally be.
They would paper the water, but...
Right. So I think there was a credit of two seventy, three seventy. Am I correct with what I see here?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do allow this credit for the sewer charge based on a broken pipe and the water fell into the ground or on the ground as compared to into our sources.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Connor to adjust this bill, uh, adjust the bill for two hundred and seventy, three seventy. Motion seconded by trustee Corrier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think there's one more, too. We should do the other one as well.
Yeah. But then we just got, it just came in today.
It just came in today. Isabel over here.
Where is that 62? Up the hill, down the hill?
The 62 has got to be, ah, 62 has got to be on top of the hill.
Little rock there?
Yeah.
Is that the yellow one?
The yellow one on the left going up the hill?
Yeah.
So this one was, the water was shut off?
Right. And it could have been an error in the reading of one thousand gallons. So it was a five dollar or something charge.
I make a motion. Yeah, I make a motion to grant that credit.
Grant that credit?
Due to a decimal, whatever.
Right. Motion by trustee Corrier to, to adjust this five dollars and twenty-two cents. Seconded by trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item last item is correspondence and proposals from National Tank and Power Company to see how it works.
I noticed we had one from Water Solutions.
Yeah, this is just all kind of the proposals right now. Still, still looking at it. Nationwide Tank is not the best deal right now.
Is or isn't?
Is not.
Is not. Water Solutions came in lower than that or?
Well, Water Solutions doubled their price when they added in the water plant, so...
Right. I noticed, yeah, because Nationwide was just for the water tower.
Sure, water tower.
Whereas the other one was other things.
Or the contact and pumping, holding tanks at the water plant.
And then you got M and K?
Mm-hmm.
So we got three different proposals right now?
I think I have three right now. Yeah.
So that's, we're still looking at?
M and K is, doesn't look good either, so...
Well, we're looking at five better. We need to get scuba gear?
Well, I may just eliminate the water plant and go back to our original proposal and just somehow have to look at it. Or I just may put Ronnie in the scuba gear and set him down.
Starkle.
Starkle mask.
Starkle, okay.
Okay, then. Thank you, Ms. Stone. Onto all business. We are still waiting, from what I gather, for steam pipe systems.
Well, I, I think I'm just going to write him a letter just negating the whole thing somehow. Just tell him we're not going to, I haven't gotten the parts back and I haven't talked to him, but I'm waiting for my final billing from Murray Electric so I can put the whole package together on my cost and reflect to them what I think they owe us anyway.
Are they still billing us or they have an old...
I haven't seen anything come in in two months.
Since this issue's occurred.
And our purchase policy? I like keeping that on there.
A lot of wars can come off, no, I don't think. I mean, we're, we're in place with the agents.
We're paying bills, so...
Yeah, we can take that one out.
Yeah.
Make a motion on that or?
No, we're just...
Take it out?
We just dropped that.
Telemetry is all in place?
It's all in place. We may do just a little fine tuning in a couple of weeks to see, after we evaluate the system for the last four, three weeks now.
As far as purchases and installation, I mean, it's pretty much done except...
The major stuff is...
Except for I may have the electrician come off one more day to fine tune some of the, the settings.
We don't...
Has he billed us anything yet for the whole scope of it?
No, I asked him to do it before the board meeting so I can get him paid for what he's done to date, or at least so I can get an updated cost summary, and I, he took off to Florida.
Okay.
Where do we get that billed? He's already trick or tripped in Florida.
Yeah, he's already, he's already spent the money.
So we want to take telemetry off of this? I mean, the, the problem has been solved. We're down to minor issues now.
The pressures are where they should be every morning.
Coming on, shutting off.
Yes.
You'll just fill us in on your work reporting?
I have a telemetry systems report to begin hopefully soon.
Good. That can go. I'll take care of that. Uh, number three, insurance. I think we've got all of that done. I think we're going out to...
A lot of more is done.
Right.
We've been paying and we've been paying.
So that'll be gone to all business. New business. Anybody have any new business?
Um, made a visit to the school board budget meeting last night. Paul Barker attended. Let him know that I was there representing the village of Champlain, and they were all glad about it. Spoke about possible water renovation. Kind of ended there. No, no decisions were made or anything like that, but they did say, thank you very much. We're glad to see somebody from the village and on and on. That was a very good thing.
I have something on that also. I happened to bring that because I, I had some concerns and questions about our little school that's sitting up there. If anybody had made any idea of what they were going to do with it. They still haven't. They've got it assessed at a praise value. I think it was three hundred and eighty-five thousand or something like that. They'd rather see it go to, you know, I mentioned maybe a community center kind of service. I don't even know if we could pull it off right now, but just to, to throw it out in front of the board and see if there's anywhere down the road where we might be able to utilize this building for ourselves. They seemed open to suggestions or even, you know, a proposal on what we would like to do with the building as far as maybe an office space for JECO, maybe adult education classes that we could bring into the area, things like that, but I don't know if we have a budget to do it right now or anything, or, but I'm just kind of curious on whether... but I'm just kinda curious on what they're planning on doing with that school up there.
Well, I remember last year when they were talking about closing the school, they, and when I think when they finalized closing the school, they said that they were going to set up some, some, some type of committee uh, of public people and also school personnel to be on this committee to figure out what to do with it.
Right.
And I don't think they've done anything.
They haven't.
And it has been a year almost.
They seemed really interested. I, that's the impression I got. They seemed interested in suggestions and it was.
They entertained the idea that giving it back to the public at a reasonable situation, decision, agreement, they're not objective to. They do know that the building is worth three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Doesn't mean that they would like to seek that. You know, this tax dollar, same position that we're in here, but it doesn't, they entertained the idea that if someone would throw them an option of a municipality or public meeting ground or whatever, negotiations would not be rejected.
Right, they'd like to say, they seemed really interested in all proposals that we could give to them, and, and they, they seemed really interested about, especially that option about giving back to the community. If there's something we can do to the community, they'd like to at least look it over and, and, uh, you know, I hate to see that, that, you know, I attended that school and, and it was a terrible thing and loss, but I know the mayor fought for it. But boy, if we could, if we could somehow keep that school and maybe turn it into, and like I said, adult education classes, or if we could do something productive, you know, where we could give back to the residents, uh, and the school board was willing to work with us on it, I think it's something we should at least think about exploring. Just something to put on the back of your mind. Uh, we certainly could use the ballpark and the field, uh.
Well, I think some of that, and, and I know especially like the, the playground area, when, because the money was raised by a residence of, of the school district, well, not just the village, well, I mean, I mean, for the area. So that wasn't school funds that built it, and that, at the time, it was stated that if for some reason the school closed, that would still stay, you know, public.
Yeah.
Whether, who, who was responsible for it, I don't know, but, I mean, that would stay there. And as far as the fields on the other side, you know, that's, I don't know what would ever happen with that.
They're still talking, but they don't know if they really have the budget this year. They, I mean, they're concerned about upkeep of the lawn this year, you know, for that, for that field, and, uh, so that seemed to be one of their concerns, uh.
We've got, I say we mow our own grass at this.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I don't think.
We have, we have, uh, the total six inch, we can cite a quarter.
I, I don't think the village is in a position to try and buy a building.
No, no, no.
They wanted to give it to us and we could use it to, to self-sustaining type of thing where.
We can't take the donation.
You know, that was the only way I'd, I'd foresee us being able to take that building.
Yeah.
They gave it to us and we could make, not make money on it, but have enough money coming in by renting out space or something.
To offset the.
To offset the costs.
Right, just for the upkeep of the building.
But I mean, I know the school back and use that gymnasium this winter because they had the problem with the middle school gym.
Right.
It flooded.
Right.
So.
Just something to throw in the back of the, back burners and, and keep in mind if we come up with any ideas or suggestions. I mean, it's just something to think about. Peter, thank you. I'd like to have a motion, uh, I need to go into executive session, but still move. Second, motion by Trustee Connor, second by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, off.